Good afternoon and welcome to the Land Use and Transportation Committee for today, Monday, December 16th, 2019, our last Land Use Committee meeting of the 2019 calendar year. I am Aaron Peskin, the Chair of this committee, joined to my left by Committee Member Supervisor Matt Haney. Our clerk is Ms. Erica Major, and we welcome, in her own right, for her first trial-by-fire experience at the Land Use Committee Deputy City Attorney Ann Pearson.
Item number four is a hearing on the implementation of Ordinance Number 190-19, Personal Wireless Service Facility Site Permits.
Thank you, Ms. Major. Colleagues, ever since this Board of Supervisors passed legislation earlier this year to bring San Francisco into further compliance with federal and state law relating to wireless cell site regulation, we've heard from, we've all heard from countless individuals in the public about their concerns ranging from health concerns, aesthetic concerns, undergrounding concerns, and privacy concerns. And I think many of these are quite legitimate expressions to members of this board. And it's been a very frustrating topic of discussion. I've had the pleasure and pain of participating in these discussions and appeals over the last two decades, largely in part because the telecom industry has, as I said to Ms. Blackstone, fair and squarely, fairly and squarely purchased a lot of influence at the federal and state levels to tie local governments' hands and our ability to regulate this industry responsibly and commensurate with the desires of our citizens. Beginning when I was two years old with the Federal Telecommunications Act, I'm sorry, I just missed that by 32 years, with the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which was the first overhaul of telecom regulations in over a half-century and extending to changes to our state Public Utilities Code and Public Utilities Commission, which actually even went further than the federal, than the FCC, our ability here in San Francisco has been constrained as it relates to regulation of public health and safety matters. Over the past several months, my office has undertaken a review to understand the difference between what is required of us relative to federal and state law preemption and where we may have done more, as has been contended by advocates, than is required of us, and where we may have further constrained our authority to regulate in this area. Some have contended that we've gone above and beyond what is required by federal and state law. Others contend that the city has reaped certain benefits, such as the fact that the city charges rent for cell sites in the public right-of-way, and in some instance telecom companies are obligated to fully replace utility poles in exchange for the ability to install on these facilities. I also want to recognize the public policy imperative to ensure that all of our citizens and residents have adequate access to the Internet, which has become an indispensable commodity in our society's daily lives. But I also believe that 5G, the fifth generation of cells and smartphones, is about more than just cellphone service and Internet access. It's about an explosion of network devices that are and continue to be and have been a part of every facet of our lives. And inasmuch as the health concerns may be even more real relative to our use of devices that these wireless cell sites enable, I do have concerns about an explosion of wireless-enabled devices in our homes and in our public right-of-way, from self-driving cars to wireless security devices to wireless household appliances. And the concerns are not just about health. They also, as I have repeatedly warned, are about privacy implications. And I've noted, for instance, that Ring security cameras were recently the subject of controversy for being subject to widespread hacking. Even the federal government has actually banned a Chinese manufacturer of 5G infrastructure because of cybersecurity and privacy concerns. I want to acknowledge staff in a number of departments, starting with Public Works, Ms. Deborah Lutzke and Jeremy Spitz, from our Public Utilities Commission, John Scarpula, the Health Department, Dr. Thomas Aragon, and Patrick Fosdahl, who have been revisiting a almost 10-year-old study that was undertaken by then-Dr. Rajiv Batya, the Planning Department, Marcel Boudreau, the City Administrator's Office, Mr. Bill Barnes, and of course, the City Attorney's Office, Deputy City Attorney Bill Sanders, who unfortunately cannot be here today, which will lead me to ask that this item be continued to the call of the Chair, because I think he is similarly important to this conversation. And I want to thank you all for meeting with my office and my staff, Lee Hepner, to further understand and get to the bottom of this regulatory arena. Thank you in particular to Public Works for agreeing to hold off on adoption of your objective standards while we create this space for this hearing today and any follow-up that will come from it. And thanks to the Public Health Department, which has conferred with my office and has indicated that within the next quarter, they will present their update to their 2010 memorandum that I just referenced, addressing any potential health risks of these wireless cell sites. And I also note that the Board of Appeals in July of this year also requested that update from Public Health. While much of this boils down to a very frustrating legal conundrum that is the result of federal and state preemption that I referenced earlier, I want to turn this over right now to members of the public who've waited quite some time for this hearing. And despite my frustration at having most of our well-intentioned ideas rejected based on preemption, I'm hoping that this hearing might facilitate some new creative thinking about how best to protect the public health and public interests, including aesthetics and the public right-of-way. Members of the public have also submitted a number of policy ideas that my staff and I would like to open this item for, to public comment for, good ideas and public testimony. So if you, I don't have any speaker cards, but if people would like to testify, please feel free to do so for Speaker, please, Ms. Selby.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Thank you so much for having this hearing. Unfortunately, we, a lot of our people are coming at 2:30. We underestimated your speed, I guess, today, so hopefully we can last long enough so that you can hear some of the other speakers. What I'm going to do today is just go through some talking points that I hope that you all received, Supervisors Safaii and Haney. And it would be great if we, you know, if you want to take a look at them as I'm going through them. As you know, that multiple small cell installations within the public right-of-way will negatively impact property values, pose a threat to the public health, safety, and welfare, create traffic and pedestrian safety hazards, impact tree health, and where proximity conflicts may require trimming of branches or require removal of roots, create visual and aesthetic blights, and potentially, and potential safety hazards, particularly in extreme weather. And as San Francisco is one of the destinations in the United States to live and work and visit, we really want to make sure that the leaders preserve that reputation and design laws fully within, everything in this document that you have in front of you are fully within the FCC order and prior regulations. I want to be very, very clear on that. Whatever other folks are telling you, this has been vetted, and all of these ideas are within the bounds. So the very first thing I'm going to ask you to do is, there are different, as we have learned, thank you to Bill Barnes, actually, this ordinance amends an earlier ordinance governing all poles in the city and county of San Francisco, and we urge the Board of Supervisors to write a resolution requiring the Public Utilities Commission and the municipal transportation authorities who have the other poles to amend their contracts and standards to be consistent with the ones that we're requesting to be made to Ordinance 190-19.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. George Wooding, Coalition for San Francisco Neighborhoods. Why rush to sell off San Francisco? The FCC has significantly overreached their authority and is threatening San Francisco's sovereignty to keep up with China's 5G program. More than a dozen U.S. cities are challenging federal regulators in court over a recent decision that gives telecom companies millions in financial and other breaks as they race to build a next-generation wireless network powered by 5G mobile data. Officials from Los Angeles, Portland, Oregon, Bellevue, Washington, among others, asked the U.S. Court of Appeals of the Ninth Circuit Court to review and rule changed by the Federal Communications Commission, which restricts cities' ability to charge. And this is what I really, the point I really wanted to make is that you have a fiduciary responsibility to the city as well as the health. Under the FCC's new policy, telecom carriers seeking permits to install their network equipment on public infrastructure must have their requests reviewed more quickly by city officials. Cities are also required to charge carriers no more than 270 per year per cell site in access fees. Before the new policy, carriers would expect to pay more than $500 per pole annually. So why rush to sell off San Francisco? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wooding. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Thomas Cowan, and I'm a family physician, and I have worked and lived in San Francisco for approximately 15 years. I don't know much about politics or ordinances. I do, however, know a lot about the health ramifications of wireless radiation. In 2000, a man named Neil Cherry analyzed the rate of childhood cancers as compared to their distance the children lived from Sutro Towers. He found that the children who live within a mile of the tower have nine times the rate of leukemia, 15 times the rate of lymphoma, 31 times the rate of brain cancer, and 18 times the rate of total cancer as children who lived more than a mile from Sutro Towers. The implementation of this 4G, 5G rollout will dramatically increase the disease rate in the population of San Francisco. This includes heart disease, diabetes, cancer, and a host of neurological diseases in children and adults, including particularly the rate of Alzheimer's disease in San Francisco. We are at a crossroads in San Francisco. We can either reject this 4G, 5G rollout and begin to lay the foundation for a safe, wired city, or we will risk becoming one of the most toxic cities in the world. I urge you to take the first step to blocking this Ordinance 190-19. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. My name is Linda Smith. I've lived in San Francisco since 1985, and I'm a former editor at the San Francisco Chronicle. I have a different kind of story for you today. Early this year, seven neighbors got together to oppose the permitted installation of a wireless antenna on a light pole outside their building at the corner of Pacific Avenue and Webster Street. In their appeal, which I have here and will leave with the clerk, they documented in great detail that the DPW, the Department of Public Health, and the Planning Department all made incorrect determinations regarding this permit. As a result, the neighbors won their appeal and the installation was blocked. Their appeal shows that although Verizon and other telecom companies are required by law to document radio frequency emissions after antennas are installed, the company has never done so, not once. And although DPW is required to track and assess such documentation before issuing permits, it has never done so. Going forward with the deployment of 5G and more 4G antenna within the city, how can residents have any trust that these radiation-emitting antennas are not creating harm when no safety testing has ever been done? And when no one is holding these telecom companies or DPW accountable for their unlawful acts? Such unlawful installations violate the precautionary principle ordinance enacted in 2003 in San Francisco. It states, "Where threats of serious or irreversible damage to people or nation nature exist, lack of full scientific certainty about cause and effect shall not be viewed as sufficient reason for the city to postpone cost-effective measures to prevent the degradation of the environment or..."
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Roxanne Statchen. I'm a resident here in San Francisco who has been directly affected by Ordinance 190-19. I have a wireless facility proposed 12 feet in line outside my bedroom window, and it's not through the notice materials, but only through filing a protest and a Public Records Act request that I could actually learn about the facility and uncovered some errors within the application. And my application is now still being reviewed, including at appeals. But during this process, Ordinance 190-19 was adopted, and now the city and the wireless companies are saying there is no public review or input necessary, there's no permit necessary anymore for this. And they rely instead on the master license with SFPUC, which is an outdated agreement. And that agreement contemplates certain regulatory process that has been removed through the adoption of Ordinance 190-19. It's obviously problematic to remove the public process entirely from citing these facilities that affect the aesthetics of the city and also are quite controversial in terms of their potential health effects. And all one has to do is drive around the city to see the proliferation of them and the conversion of many of them from 4G to 5G. So the status quo relying on an outdated master agreement that is no longer paired with a permitting process is clearly flawed. I urge the Board of Supervisors to rescind Ordinance 190-19 and replace it with one that includes a public process and allows the public to have a say in how the facilities are cited. I also support many of the comments that were made at the beginning of the public process, that there are very straightforward, common sense items that could be included to help protect the aesthetics and the well-being of San Francisco in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Johnstone. I would like to use my time to highlight the importance of preserving some form of notification in your legislation. You know, it's already far from a fair fight, and the more we allow this to proceed in secrecy, the more trouble we're going to have. If you read through Board of Appeals, Appeals Against Cellphone Towers, you'll see that almost every person there alleges that they were given improper notification. Now, why did they do that? I don't think it's because it's a winning argument, because I don't think the Board of Appeals has ever overturned a permit on the basis of improper notice. I think it's more likely that it's actually true. I know that Verizon in particular has gone to great lengths to avoid giving notice to people. Under your previous legislation, notice was required to be given to owners or tenants. And Verizon interpreted this, and I see that you have Mr. Albritton here today, and maybe you can ask him about this. Verizon's position was they could choose to notify owners or tenants, but not both, right? If I am in charge of running a race and I say, "Person who comes in first or second gets a medal," I don't expect you to choose the second person and not give the first person a medal, right? It's an unreasonable interpretation. Hundreds of permits were issued with this background. So I just want to highlight that we need to have notice. If neighbors don't know what's going on, they can't fight back. Whenever we go to our politicians, they always say, "Well, you know, you need to come up and influence the legislation." We can't do that if we don't know what's going on. So I would appreciate if you could keep that in mind. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Board members. My name is Michael Levesque, and liability is a major issue. Safety is first, and health is the biggest thing. And you are notified and urgently requested to stop permitting pervasively poisonous, invisible pollution from scientifically experimental, unsafe, and untested 4G, 5G wireless communications, telecommunications facilities, and Sutro Tower 5G broadcasting in the city and county of San Francisco. Thousands of peer-reviewed scientific studies reveal serious and irreversible microwave health and safety dangers to the residents of San Francisco, especially children, pregnant women, electrically sensitive elderly persons, and others. The burden of liability weighs heavy on the city. Wisely, they should have indemnification backed by insurance policies by the wireless industry and escape clauses in the WTF contracts they possess. Joe Moskowitz published an article in Scientific American in which he advocated an immediate moratorium on the deployment of 5G and demanded our government fund the research needed to adopt biologically-based exposure limits that protect our health and safety. The 2003 precautionary principle ordinance is a rule of law. It requires prevention of harm and resolution of scientific uncertainty to protect people and the environment. Upon these grounds, it is mandatory to preserve public health and safety by enacting an immediate moratorium against activation of any further San Francisco wireless telecommunications facilities. You also have the T-Mobile versus San Francisco case, which gives you the right to do this. So it's all on your shoulders, and I'm sure that you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. It's also on our state and federal officials' shoulders insofar as they keep preempting our ability. Next speaker, please.
You're not preempting.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Kieran Jackson. I'm a student at San Francisco State University, and I'm here to protest the implementation of the 5G cellphone towers. There's a lot of stuff that we don't know about the effects of this kind of technology, and what we do know is that so many people are very sensitive to this type of radiation. And I just implore you to wait until we know more. There are multiple countries across the whole entire planet that have banned 5G in their countries due to not only people's sensitivities to these types of radiation, but also the fact that the frequency of this radiation can also be harnessed as a crowd-control weapon using the same frequency of millimeter waves. So many people have spoken and told you we need to just halt on this, and there's nothing much more that I can say, but let's just wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And if there are any other members of the public who'd like to testify on this item, if you'll line up.
Hi, my name is Betsy Russell Manning, and I've compiled a book on 5G is coming. Of course, it's already here in parts of San Francisco. It's coming to our home, our schools, our libraries, our park, our town, and to your children also. It's linked to cancer, heart disease, diabetes, Alzheimer's, cataracts, altered genes, burning skin, immune dysfunction, autism, antibiotic resistance, immune suppression, and birth defects. And here are, there's over 240 scientists around the world who warn about the dangers of these millimeter waves to all of us. And I'll get you a copy of this to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no other members of the public for public comment, we will close public comment. Ms. Lutzke, you want to come up? Or Mr. Spitz? Do I, there we go. I believe Supervisor Haney has a question for you. And you are also welcome to respond to anything that I said or that you've heard in the public or any other things that you, as a subject matter expert and regulator, may want to add to this conversation.
Thank you, Supervisor Peskin.
Oh, so there was a couple of things that came up from the public that I'm wondering if you could respond to. One is sort of this question of the timing of implementation and whether there's some possibility of waiting and there are court decisions coming down and such, and what your response is there. And then the point about notice and who's given notice, it does seem like it would be important to let tenants know in addition to owners, if you could respond to those two things.
Absolutely. So last year, a lot of work was put together to respond to the FCC requirements that we meet the 60-day shot clock. So it was something all the city departments got together to figure out within the process that we had set in place and with what we needed to do in order to allow processing of permits to occur, meet the timelines, go through all of the different departments for the proper reviews. So as for the timing, I don't know. I would defer that to the city attorney, whether there's the ability to wait. We currently are implementing the new process that was adopted on September 9th. But if you gave direction to hold off, we would do so at your direction. As to the noticing requirement, that was something that we felt was very important. So there is actually a posting requirement that still exists in the current Article 25 legislation. But I do want to footnote that the legislation only addresses PG&E poles. So currently, the PUC and MTA maintain processes for their own intellectual property and their poles, and Public Works is implementing all the requirements as they relate to anything being affixed to a PG&E pole. So for PG&E poles, there is a posting requirement that the pole be posted when the department has made a final determination after all the agencies that are required to review have given or signed off on the different elements that they have jurisdictional authority over, whether it's the Planning Department doing the sequel review or the aesthetic review. And then there would be Department of Public Health that issues their determination that both the noise and RF emission standards set by the FCC are met, and that the PG&E pole would be posted, and then within 300 feet, poles in that area would be posted as well. So the neighborhood could come out and engage in a public process if they, so, were interested through appealing to the Board of Appeals. So that process and that posting requirement still does remain in the current legislation.
And for the PUC and the MTA, they have a whole separate thing that they do that doesn't have the same noticing process and appeals process?
Public Works is no longer overseeing their processes. In the prior legislation, we were issuing permits for all poles, and now they currently are taking and doing all the review related to their assets.
So, Ms. Lutzke, I would, for one, be delighted if you want to continue to agree to hold off on the adoption of the objective standards. I think, first and foremost, and I don't mean to be cranky on Deputy City Attorney Pearson's first debut at the Land Use Committee, but having our Deputy City Attorney, who is the legal subject matter expert, Mr. Sanders, here, and I'm not sure why he's not here, would be very helpful. I do not want to put Ms. Pearson in the position of having to delve into a body of legal material that is not her subject matter expertise. So I would like to continue to hold off. I would like to continue this hearing, and I would also like to get some legal advice about the potential outcomes of litigation three months hence. And at about the same time, the updated 10-year later report will be forthcoming from our own Department of Public Health, which... Department of Public Health, which truly is independent of the FCC and the telecommunications industry. So I would like to make a motion to continue this item to the call of the Chair and colleagues. If we can do that without objection, I will continue to meet with Ms. Dodd and Ms. Selby and the advocacy community offline as well as with Ms. Lutske. And I failed to mention Brian Roberts and Deputy City Attorney Sanders as we continue to try to figure out what we're going to do with the ordinance that this board unanimously passed earlier this year. So if we can do that without objection, that will be the order. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. I will, that will not be the order until Supervisor Safai speaks.
Thank you. Well, I mean, you pretty much said a lot of what I was going to say, but I do concur with the Chair. I would appreciate the holding off on any implementation. I just want to express some of the things that I've heard from many of the people in my district as well. People don't really feel like the appeals process is a real process. They feel like they submit their concerns, many of them have been expressed here today, and then everything proceeds as planned anyway. It doesn't feel, and I understand that we're moving forward with a conversation about standardization of aesthetics. I think that's an important thing. I think there needs to be time done to look into the science. I think we certainly want to get that on the record. But I just want to express the overall frustration with some of the folks that I've heard from that the appeals process always feels, and this is not a criticism of DPW, it's probably the standards by which the appeal is heard and held to. And so many times, people feel like if they look at some of these devices and how they're implemented on poles, they have one look, they have one aesthetic, and there's other ones that have a different aesthetic, so there's no real standardization. I know that's something that's going to be talked about. Then proximity, then, and then the impact and health, and all the things that we've talked about here today. So I think for all those reasons, I just want to concur with the Chair and some of the things that were expressed in this meeting today. I don't think we do any harm by slowing the conversation down a bit to really get all the facts on the table. And in particular, if we were to proceed, then there needs to be a standardization. There needs to be an understanding of why some of these are implemented and why the scale is different and size is different and the aesthetic is different, depending upon where they're implemented. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So that will be the order. Madam --